Good evening and welcome to the seventh and final in a series of forums with candidates for office on November 2nd that is being brought to you by Kewa Community College and The Citizen. These forums are shown on Verizon FiOS Spectrum as well as Arma, the Auburn Regional Media Access, as well as the college's radio station where it's played on Saturday mornings, Win 89.1. I'm your moderator, Guy Cosentino. On November 2nd, voters in the city of Auburn get to go to the polls to pick two members of City Council. We have all four candidates running this year in the studio. They include incumbent Terry Cuddy, and these are in alphabetical order, Terry Cuddy and Ginny Kent, both running on the Democratic Working Families and Auburn Party Lines, and Kewa County legislator Timothy C. Latimore and Rob Otterstatter on the Republican, Conservative, and Independent Lines. City Councilor Debbie McCormick has chosen not to seek reelection, and currently the city council is made up of five members with four Democrats and one Republican, so control of city council could change in January depending on the outcome of this election. Just as a matter of disclaimer, I would like to say that Ginny Kent and I do work together, just as for the matter of record, and we both are here at Kewa Community College working for the foundation. We do have, representing the press today, a familiar face, on screen at least for you, it is Jeremy Boyer, the executive editor of The Citizen. He'll be asking the questions. With COVID-19 protocols, we have had to change the way our forums usually occur. All our candidates are in the studio. We have limited the number of individuals that are in the studio, and everyone has to be masked. Candidates, as long as they are six feet apart, as well as they are seated, can take their masks off, as I can. Mr. Boyer is joining us by remote to reduce the number of people in the studio, and we're not allowing anyone in the control room other than students and staff. Prior to the taping of this show, the candidates drew lots to see who would go in which order, and we're going to let them give their two-minute opening statement. That order will be reversed at the end of this hour-and-a-half forum for their closing statements. Our candidates are sitting in the order of their drawn lots for their opening statements, and they are, and I'll just, before we introduce them to speak, they are the honorable Timothy C. Latimore, who was on the Republican, Conservative, Independent Lines, Rob Otterstatter, who's on the Republican, Conservative, Independent Lines, current incumbent Terry Cuddy, who is a member of City Council, he is on the Democratic Working Families Party and Auburn Party Line, and Ginny Kent, who is on the Democratic Working Families and Auburn Party. Welcome, all four of you. I know this is the second time you've been together in about a week, so thanks for joining us here at the college. We're going to start with opening statements, and a lot of, Alyssa is our timekeeper, she has a sign there, she's going to hold it up after a minute and a half. That gives you a 30-minute warning, and then red tells you to cut off, and if she doesn't cut you off, I will. So, Mayor, you get to go first, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I have the experience, four years on the council, four as city councilor and then four as mayor. I had 12 years as a legislator, 10 years as a city and county planning board member. I have the strength and I have the hope, and hope is hearing other people's experience. When I go around, either in my business, which is an insurance business, I listen to people twice as much as I talk, and that has helped me over the years. But I would like to personally thank the CSCEA, which is the Civil Service Employee Association, for their endorsement of my candidacy, and I would also like to recognize the Sierra Club for their endorsement. The Sierra Club is America's oldest and largest grassroots environmental organization. They recognize candidates who champion legislation to protect our clean air, clean water, and several other very important environmental issues such as protecting our national heritage. So I'd thank those people and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now hear from Rob Otterstatter, who is on the Republican, Conservative, and Independent Lines. Welcome to the studio.
Thank you, thank you for inviting me to speak with you this evening. My name is Rob Otterstatter. I'm a ninth-generation Auburnian. I graduated from Auburn approximately 30 years ago. I'm married to my wife, Joanie, with three children. My oldest is studying severe weather meteorology at the University of Oklahoma. My two youngest are just preparing to embark on their school careers here in Auburn. We own a docked and social house in the old Nolan Shoe Store downtown. I'm incredibly proud of my hometown. Auburn is a cultural crossroads here in New York State with many incredible national ties. However, I struggle with some aspects of Auburn currently. Unlike my opponents, I see our depopulation as a problem. Over 1,600 people have left Auburn in the previous eight years. That's approximately 6% of our population. During the time that we have lost 27% of our residents, New York State has increased 33%. In fact, all Rust Belt states have grown during the same time. We have an uptick in reported crime, both violent and drug-related, which has led to an increase in property crime. I feel as though we are stuck without a great vision for moving forward. Auburn is a great place, but I feel it could be better. I am able to help. I'm a retired community policing commander. I have a doctorate in educational leadership. I've worked to revitalize numerous cities across the United States. I've spoken on my successes at the International Exposition in Aichi, Japan. We need a positive visionary to help direct our city, and I fill that role.
Thank you, sir. We'll now hear from incumbent Terry Latimore, excuse me, Terry, Terry Cuddy. There's too many Latimores in the room right now, so Terry Cuddy, who is on the Democratic Working Families and Independent Auburn Family, Auburn Party Line. Mr. Cuddy.
Thank you, Guy, and thank you, Kewa Community College and Jeremy from The Citizen, thank you for hosting us. I'd also like to thank the telecom students. I am a former student in this department, so it's good to be back, and I'd also like to thank Auburn Regional Media Access, which I was on the founding board of this, the organization that broadcasts this. I've served on Auburn City Council for almost eight years. I'm proud of my achievements. Most importantly, the city provides quality core services to the people of Auburn. Whether it be improved infrastructure, clean water from the tap, timely trash pickup, a responsive police and fire department, or the recreation our public parks provide, there's an immense amount of work that goes into making it all happen for you. Throughout the pandemic, the city always continued to do the work that was necessary. Auburn never stopped planning, never stopped working, and never stopped helping its citizens and surrounding communities. This current council continues to provide stability in a fiscally responsible and effective manner, even in the most uncertain of times. The city needs leaders that know how to work with county, state, and federal leaders to optimize our commitments to the public trust. This is manifested in the millions of dollars brought into the city through infrastructure projects such as bridges and roads, through economic development initiatives aimed at growing opportunities for businesses downtown, our technology park throughout the city. I'm running again because my work is not done. Owasco Lake still is under threat of harmful algal blooms. I will fight to enforce relevant rules and regulations to protect our watershed and drinking water. I want to bring programming for youth in our newly renovated public parks. I want to continue to help train our future workforce for the new challenges that lie ahead. It is imperative that Auburn work, that, it is imperative that Auburn continues to build on what I started eight years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. We'll now hear from Ginny Kent, who's on the Democratic Working Families Party Line and Auburn Party Line.
Thank you, Mr. Cosentino, and thank you to the college and The Citizen, and for Mr. Boyer for hosting us today. I'm glad to be here. I was born and raised in the city of Auburn. My father worked as a union electrician while mom stayed home and raised the six children. After school, I explored life outside of Auburn, but my husband and I chose to come back to my hometown to raise our family and purchased our home in 1991 and have been there ever since. As a mother and a daughter, I know firsthand that Auburn is a great place to grow up and to raise a family. Currently, I'm Associate Director of Development for the Kewa County Community College Foundation, and I serve as trustee for Seymour Public Library. Prior to the foundation, I worked at the Kewa County Chamber of Commerce for 13 years, where the focus is economic development and tourism. In addition, I oversaw the Leadership Pugah in the Finger Lakes Grants Information Center programs. I am well-positioned to be an effective city councillor. My community services also prepared me for the challenges of city council. I was co-founder of the Auburn Beautification Commission, a member of the City of Auburn Comprehensive Planning Committee, two-term member of the Auburn School Board, and of the Auburn Industrial Development Authority. In fact, during my time on ADA, one of the projects I'm proud of is the addition of the Hilton Garden Inn to our local economy. It has become a valuable asset to our tourism market. As I go door-to-door, I'm heartened by what I hear. People like living here. They can see the positive changes Auburn has made, such as upgrades to the playgrounds in efforts to address the abandoned properties. While so much in Auburn we should be thankful for, we also have challenges ahead. Recovery from the pandemic, protecting Owasco Lake and providing safe drinking water are some of the priorities. As your next councillor, I will work to meet these challenges and continue to move Auburn forward in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. We'll now turn to Mr. Boyer for the next hour and 15 minutes. He'll be able to ask questions, or hour and 10 minutes, he'll be able to ask questions of all of you, or individually. As we discussed before, each of you will get two minutes to answer a question. If you'd like to follow up, just give me the high sign and we'll give you another minute, and we'll continue that as long as I think it's prudent and we don't need to move on. If it's a question for one of you individually, you'll have two minutes for that answer. Your opponents will have one minute to chime in if they want, and then we'll give you the last final word on that unless it seems that we need to continue that question. Mr. Boyer, welcome. I'm sorry you're not in the studio with us today, but for health protocols, we understand. Welcome.
Thank you for making this happen, and we'll do our best to get a lot of ground covered today. To start things, I'd like to kind of build off of really all your opening statements, and just ask you, you know, to give us your sense of the state of the city. You know, even in your statements and certainly on the campaign trail, we're kind of hearing two pretty divergent takes on whether Auburn's heading in the right direction. So I'd like to pose the question to you in this way, and that is, give me a one-word answer to "the state of Auburn is," and then fill in the blank, and then go ahead and elaborate on why you would choose that word.
Mr. Latimore, you're up first, you have two minutes on the subject.
I've never felt uncomfortable in my own city, even though, I mean, public safety was always a number-one issue. I worked in the prison right after the prison riots and built a gymnasium there, and never felt any issues at all. I felt protected by the correction guards. When I walk around my city today, even when I go to work on the west side of the city, I look out on Delavan Street and I see that there was a murder there, and for years it was operating as a drug house. The other day, there was some kind of incident on Wood Street. The ladies in the office had to lock down the office. And, you know, there was an incident on Barber Street the other day. So we need to have community policing. I hope that we can, you know, I know we built a lot of nice things, such as playgrounds and stuff, but I feel that we need some kind of playground director to be there because there is some activity that's not really conducive to public safety. Hopefully, we can get into some of those issues going down the road. But I, this is the first time I've ever felt unsafe because of the state and federal changes in the laws, making things difficult for our police officers to do their job. So I hope that we can maybe change that around and make the city safer again.
Thank you, legislator. We'll now turn to Mr. Otterstatter on this issue of picking one word and then expanding upon that. Sir?
My one word is tumultuous. And the reason I select that word, growing up in Auburn, I don't remember a lot of crime, but I do remember Auburn's decline. I remember when downtown became more vacant, we were all spending our time out at the mall, and downtown shops were emptying out, and was very pleased to see a lot of the shops downtown filling. When my wife and I made the decision to return to Auburn after my years away, we were very pleased to see some of the revitalization downtown. The longer that we've been back, the more I've seen that we have an incredible crime issue that was sort of shocking to me. As a child, I don't remember, again, a lot of crime issues, but we've had a number of shootings. The shooting on Delavan Street that was just mentioned, the attempted rape by a 15-year-old ex on the cats. I've spoken with business members up on Wall Street. I've had three separate business owners reach out to me and say that, you know, due to the amount of crime, they're actually looking at relocating their businesses in other cities. And people are beginning to feel unsafe in Auburn. So I think tumultuous is the word that I'm going to go with.
All right, thank you. We'll now hear from city councillor Cuddy, and pick your one word and expand on that, and you have two minutes on that.
Thank you, Guy. I think Auburn is improving. Recently, a friend of mine from Ithaca mentioned that his son recently moved to Auburn and says he really likes it here. One of the statistics that my opponents like to bring up is that the population is declining, and I will say that that has been happening to cities like Auburn and Rust Belt cities since 1930. I can't take responsibility for the Great Depression, nor can I do for the loss of manufacturing jobs. But what I see Auburn doing is leveraging what it does have, which has a great history, and we are using that to bring in tourists. My role in ADA has helped bring jobs to the area. As you know, that TESSE has set up a plant in the industrial park. I was very happy to help fund that. Prison City North has expanded, so there's more opportunity, and as was mentioned last week, Terrapin is opening up, and there's going to be 100 new jobs for people to work in. So I see progress. I see that the quality of life is improving, and one of the statistics that my opponents have failed to mention is that where there is an uptick in population is younger people. When I knock on the door, and I've knocked on over 2,000 doors in this campaign, I see more younger people answering the doors. And since COVID happened, younger people are coming back to move home and help the city grow. So I see it improving, and I take umbrage to the statistics that I don't think are very accurate. So I think that one of the things that my counterparts should not do is get their information from sources like AreaVibes because it's irresponsible.
Thank you, Mr. Cuddy. We'll now turn to Ginny Kent, who will have two minutes to come up with her word and also her explanation.
Thank you. So my word for Auburn is upbeat. I was on the City of Auburn Comprehensive Planning Committee, I think it was in '08 and '09, and through that work for that whole year, we had about 15 meetings throughout that area with stakeholders and so forth. We were able to take that plan and leverage enough money to get a lot of projects underway. In fact, I think the total was about $8 million of federal and state money. With that funding, we were able to realize a lot of the State Street corridor we see today. There was a time when it was Nash's, and I can't remember what else was there at the moment. Today, we have Prison City, we have Osteria, we have Moon Dogs, the Chamber went there in 2012. AT Wally's is there, and soon we're going to have an opening of that wonderful pocket park right across the street. Also, when I was on ADA, we had projects that came in, I already mentioned Hilton Garden Inn. So the reason I mention that here is because federal and state funding doesn't come to cities that are in dire straits necessarily, these kinds of projects. They invest in us because we see us using the money wisely. We're investing in our community. I have to also say something about the statistics because I am a, I am a statistics nut, and I have to check everything at the original primary source. So we have lost 824 people in the last 10 years, and that's just under 3%. And we also, the crime statistics, we need to look at the FBI and Auburn Police Statistics and not whatever the site was on the internet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Mr. Otterstatter, I saw your hand come up, you'll have one minute.
Looking at U.S. Census data, between 1950 and 2016, Rust Belt states, which are typically the ones, Pennsylvania, New York, around the Great Lakes, have gained anywhere from 22 to 65%. New York State during that time increased by 33%, while Auburn did in fact decrease.
Can I just say something about that?
Ginny Kent and then Mr. Latimore, you'll have one minute, and then Mr. Latimore will have one minute.
Okay. If you drill down in the data on the state growth, it's overwhelmingly New York City growth. The very small percentage of it is upstate. Just wanted to make that comment. It's an interesting study. It is getting the weeds. Thank you.
Mr. Latimore, you'll have one minute.
The downtown, you know, has improved, you know, and that was through a lot of good planning there. You know, I was on the planning board, and we were planning, you know, senior citizen housing such as Boyle, Stryker, and Schwartz Towers. They were more or less the pillars, you know, we felt we could build the downtown around it. And then when I was on council and as mayor, you know, we opened up State Street Exchange and Exchange Mall, and, I mean, those things have been growing right along. But, you know, you have to have industry, and it's nice to have TESSE Plastics in town. TESSE just purchased two large buildings in Rochester, which were part of Kodak, and they are, you know, we should have ready-go sites for manufacturers to expand.
Okay, Mr. Cuddy, you'll have one minute, and then we'll move on with Mr. Boyer.
Well, we are growing, our economic development opportunities are growing, and I also just want to make sure that as this debate continues, we don't just throw around terms like "the other day there was a murder" or "the other day this happened" because it's not accurate. You can't say that. To address some of the issues that have been mentioned earlier, the city is improving. As many of you know, our codes crew is cleaning up houses that have been abandoned and are nuisances. We closed down the very house where that murder occurred a long time ago, not the other day. So we are addressing the issues that are happening through the nuisance board and our police department. So I just don't want the vagaries to continue.
I'm going to move on, I'm sure this is going to come up again, so we'll move on to Mr. Boyer.
All right.
One more question, Mr. Boyer.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm picking on you.
All right.
Go ahead.
All set?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to a public safety topic, the city-run ambulance service, that's going to be starting next week, as long as everything's moving along as scheduled, and what it means basically is the city's going to be operating emergency response on its own after having contracted with TLC Emergency Service for many years. The council approved a plan to move on from that. It was a 4-1 vote earlier this year, and Mr. Cuddy, the incumbent here, did vote in support of that. So I'd like to ask all four candidates the same question, but obviously for Mr. Cuddy, it's, you know, the framing, "Why did you support this?" and for the other three candidates, "Would you have supported it and why?"
Mr. Otterstatter, you're going to get to go first, and we're going to go rotation-wise.
So I've always supported our first responders, and in this case, this is already approved. I have spoken with cities that have had ambulance services, they warn there are pitfalls. So as we have already moved forward with this, I hope that we are looking at cities that have found success with ambulance services and that we emulate them. We do have a brand-new firehouse, and unfortunately, the ambulance service was approved after the firehouse, the new firehouse was approved, and so we can't, we can't keep our EMS in the same building. It would have been nice, pie in the sky, if we could have housed all of our public safety close with each other to help mitigate any of the burden of the old building that they will now be moving into.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Otterstatter. We'll now hear from the only person in the room who voted on this issue, and that's Mr. Cuddy.
So I still wholeheartedly support the position, and just to expand and follow up on Mr. Otterstatter, the ambulance service will inhabit the former Station 1, so, which is right next to the police department, and I think that would make a good pairing for several reasons. But I'm excited about our new 24/7 ambulance service, which was needed based on a study which shows that the trends of declining private and volunteer ambulance services were happening. And so since the city has, already has a certificate of need, it is our responsibility to provide an ambulance service for Auburn, and I look at how well the men and women and public safety and the fire department and police department serve the city of Auburn, and I do think we can provide that caliber of service with the ambulance. So is it, we're at a critical time, as we all know, to have a consistent service for seniors and other vulnerable populations. This will be starting November 1st, and I know there's been concern by people as to how this is going to be paid, and the Auburn ambulance will be self-sufficient, paid by insurance and Medicaid reimbursements, and, you know, three weeks ago, we hired a billing firm to handle those very reimbursements, and the taxpayers will not be funding this. This will be self-sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cuddy. We'll now hear from Ginny Kent on this issue of the ambulance service. I think it's up and running this coming week.
Thank you. I do support the city's decision to provide city-run ambulance service. By transitioning to a city-run ambulance service, firefighters and police will be on-scene to attend to whatever the situation was that caused the medical emergency in the first place, and the city ambulance will be right by their side to focus on the patient. This at times has not been the case in the past when there have been delays in response time, or mutual aid has had to come in and meet that need. The other thing I want to say about funding it is that previously, it was funded, it was run by a private company that needed to make a profit. Well, the city won't be making a profit. They'll be able to take that income and reinvest it in the ambulance service. Thank you.
Mr. Latimore, on this issue of the ambulance service, you have two minutes.
It's always great to have a good public safety situation. I've always asked for a metropolitan system with fire, and I think that surrounding towns should be involved in helping this situation get resolved. I know that in the private sector, you cannot run a business with a five-month contract. I know that our council had said, "Well, we can't give out five-year contracts." Well, the city manager has a five-year contract, so I don't know what they're talking about when they, when they make that argument. But when I talked to either Mayor Bloomberg or Billy Barlow up in Oswego, or back in the day, Batavia, it was too expensive for them to run an ambulance service. The private sector is doing quite well with a long-term contract. Lon Thacano is a wonderful gentleman, he's been here for, you know, forever, and it's just unfortunate that all of a sudden the, you know, they were given five-year contracts. I don't know if any private sector can work on that kind of timeframe. So I'll go along with Mrs. LaCastro on that one vote, no?
Mr. Cuddy, you'll have one minute to follow up.
Based on the certificate of need, which was granted to the state, we are not allowed to have five-year contracts, so that is the way it is. So the certificate of need dictates that.
Mr. Latimore, you'll have one minute.
Well, does this say anything? Well, does this say anything about the city manager having a five-year contract?
We were, the city was communicated to, from the Department of Health, and was said that they did not approve of us giving out five-year contracts. So, we were out of compliance. So, we shortened our, we shortened our terms of service. And now, we are going to be starting our own ambulance service because we feel that because we have the certificate of need, which is granted by the Department of Health, we want to maintain consistency, especially in these uncertain times.
I'm going to let Mr. Boyer ask the rest of the questions. We'd ask the candidates from refraining from asking each other questions from now on, just so we can move this along. Mr. Boyer.
All right. And as a follow-up to this discussion, or my first question is, so, this is going to happen, so, you know, it starts next week. What should the council be monitoring for with this new service in the, you know, especially in this first year? Another way to ask it is, how will we measure if this is succeeding or not?
And Mr. Cuddy, you have the first two minutes on that. How should council monitor the ambulance service?
So, I think the metric that we should be looking at is the fact that right now, we have an operation where the city is relying primarily, you know, we still have our, the private business working with us, but we're relying heavily on mutual aid. I think that once we have a professional 24/7 public sector ambulance, we are going to be keeping a close eye on the amount of calls we're getting and coordinating with the Auburn Fire Department and building out what I see as a system that will serve not only the people of Auburn, but the mutual aid that we'll be able to provide for surrounding communities will be a benefit to not, not just the people of Auburn, but for those surrounding us. So, I think we will measure our success by the level of customer service that will be given to those that receive support from the Auburn ambulance service.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cuddy. We'll now hear from Ginny Kent on the issue of what city council should look at metric-wise on judging the ambulance service over time.
Well, I watched the presentation by the new director. She was at a council meeting recently, and I was very impressed with her. I think the metric is response time, number of calls, how many times we need to, if ever, reach out to mutual aid. And she is working closely with, right now, with the fire and police and the city manager to make sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. But I believe in the first year, the city council should be looking at everything, and especially response time. I expect it to be fine. They'll be right there.
Okay. Mr. Lattimore, you have two minutes on this issue of metrics of judging the ambulance service over time.
Let me just say, in my other position at the county, the county got out of the medical business at the nursing home because we had situations where, you know, we had bad backs on our workers' compensation, bad shoulders. We had, we had patients rolling out of beds. You know, the amount of exposure that the city has just gone into, I would measure that going down the road here as, you know, how much more do we need in insurance? We had a situation at the jail where we, we had a situation where we under-medicated somebody and they had a situation that cost us, you know, an insurance policy of a million plus another two. And I think that the hospital had to put in some additional funding. So, that exposure in regards to being in the medical business could be overwhelming. So, it'll be interesting to see how many, how many workers' compensation claims we have, how many liability claims we have. It's not just, you know, showing up at the door, it's in the billing issues. Some of the billing issues that might, you know, we're not going to be able to sue anybody for, for cost overruns or, you know, bills not paid.
Thank you, Mr. Lattimore. We'll now hear from Mr. Otterstetter on this issue of what metrics would you use to monitor the new ambulance service?
Certainly. As a first responder, I know that it's incredibly important that when citizens pick up the phone, we need to be able to respond appropriately. So, certainly taking a look at the calls that are coming in, the number of calls, the quantity of the different basic EMS calls, ALS calls, what our response time is. As Mr. Cuddy talked about our customer service, I think that's going to be incredibly important that we monitor how do our residents, how do our citizens, the recipients of our service, how are they rating the quality of the care that they're receiving? I think it is also, as I mentioned earlier, I think it's going to be incredibly important that we find other jurisdictions that have found success and that we pair with them and emulate their successes and look out for the pitfalls that I know exist there.
Mr. Cuddy, you'll have one minute.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Cosentino. I just want to respond to legislator Lattimore's concern about exposure. We already are in the medical care business with our fire department. We're in the public safety business. So, this will not have any effect on our insurance. So, you know, I don't think that that is something that would affect us moving forward with this great opportunity for the people of Auburn.
Mr. Lattimore, you'll have one minute.
Well, I mean, I've been in a government agency that got out of those businesses. I've got 45 years in the insurance business, and I've seen where all of a sudden, a certain situation, a dilemma comes up, that all of a sudden, you get a wave of claims. I don't know whether you've seen that in your side of the business, but I have.
Well, unless one of your opponents has something to say, we're going to move on. We're only giving one minute of responses. So, we can, Kent, do you have something that you wanted to add?
Well, I, I don't see the connection between running a nursing home and adding ambulance to our emergency services for the city. So, I think it's apples and oranges.
Mr. Otterstetter, anything to add or no?
No.
Okay. Mr. Boyer.
All right. Let's, let's talk about the impact of the state's new recreational marijuana law on the city of Auburn. The first, the first question when asked about it was related to the announcement, the recent announcement that Terrapin is, is looking to open a production facility in Auburn in the Technology Park, a facility that could employ up to 100 people. They want to do it on, or they're looking to purchase a parcel that's owned by the city. So, as a result, the council would likely need to approve some kind of land transfer down the road. And I'd like to ask you all, you know, what's your position? Should the city move forward and sell that parcel to this company and allow this project to move forward?
Okay. Next person up in rotation is Ms. Kent for the first question.
My understand, thank you, Mr. Boyer. My understanding is that this new company will employ up to 100 people. And I read the article yesterday about how they are, I think it was from the ADA meeting, some of the procedures they have in place to monitor security, any kind of environmental issue that might come along. I am comfortable and feel very positive about moving forward with this decision to allow this company to come to Auburn. And there is a local connection. One of the individuals went to Ithaca College and visited several area cities and chose us because they really liked our community.
Thank you, Ginny Kent. We're going in rotation. No, you had the first question for council monitoring the ambulance service. So, I keep track. We're now going to go to Mr. Lattimore with this issue of Terrapin. You're up for two minutes.
Well, as some of you might know or might not know, but, you know, I've worked with a lot of kids that have addictions, and I just, you know, wonder where this is going to all go. I know that Rob has some experience out west with Colorado and what happened out there. But I'm really concerned about the kids that we have. And I called down to our economic development team on State Street, CETA, and asked to have, have them call me and explain exactly what they're, what they're proposing. But it's interesting that, like CETA, they are funded through the county, through the gaming operation at Turning Stone. So, we do get some positives from different projects. I know that Seneca, Seneca County just, just was on the radio this morning saying that their, their sales tax and revenues are way up because of Delago's back online. So, we have to look at, I mean, Ginny had brought up the fact that she has Hilton Garden. We had an opportunity to bring in a billion-dollar Delago at Bardier with 1,400 union jobs, and it's going to pay us $8 million. So, I don't know whether Terrapin is going to pay anything like that. I keep hearing that the employment is going to be recovering inmates or something. So, I'd love to hear from the, from the people who are developing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lattimore. We'll now hear from Mr. Otterstetter. You have two minutes on this issue of Terrapin.
Certainly. I do support the legislation that has been put in place so far. My concerns is that this is a new intoxicant for many. And what I saw out in Colorado was, they went from cannabis being illegal to medical allowance to a recreational allowance. And with each new allowance, we began to see new people that hadn't felt comfortable trying this new intoxicant, that suddenly were, were trying it, getting involved. And they saw a huge growth in DUID, driving under the influence of drugs. They saw a huge increase in public intoxication. They saw a huge increase in the, the children of parents who had edibles at home, who had not responsibly kept those edibles away from their children. They, they wound up in the hospital, or down at Children's Hospital in Denver. So, knowing that there are issues like that up front, we know that there's going to be a 13% retail sales tax. 4% of that will come locally. I would like to see that money go directly towards substance abuse issues. I'd like that to go towards education. And we're going to have to evaluate, what is the cost of this to our community? We already have substance abuse issues locally. So, how is that going to impact? I would like to see some sort of metric along those lines. And lastly, I've spoken personally with at least two folks quite recently that are interested in developing businesses. So, the business, the economic development aspect of this, I see pop, I see as a boon to us. I would like to see that increase with our local population or give opportunities specifically to our local population.
Thank you, Mr. Otterstetter. Mr. Cuddy, this issue of Terrapin, and I think that was where Mr. Boyer was going.
Yes. So, the land, parcel of land that Mr. Boyer is talking about is owned by ADA. And I'm a member, currently a member on ADA. And last meeting, they submitted a letter of intent to purchase that property. And I intend on going through with the sale as long as everything, as long as everything moves forward. I'm excited about the 100 new jobs that are coming to Auburn. I think that if, and I invite everyone to watch the ADA meeting, like my colleague, Ms. Kent just did, you will see the, a representative of the company talk about the community-oriented things that they do for the communities that, where they have businesses. So, you know, I, I'm not sure how to understand Mr. Lattimore's comment on the kind of workers that they are going to hire. But they're going to hire workers that need jobs and that have been overlooked in society. So, I see that as a positive. So, also, they are, you know, it's a professional business, and, you know, under current law, they will not be able to sell locally. So, I feel in general that New York State has learned by other states' mistakes when it comes to legalization. And I just also want to say that cannabis is not an opioid, and I think it's very dangerous and irresponsible to conflate them. So, I just don't want people to get the wrong idea about that.
Mr. Otterstetter, you'll have one minute.
Mr. Cuddy, you talked about the, the jobs that this will be bringing in, the 100 new jobs. And a couple of days ago, I was actually out at a local cohoe, a brand-new facility that opened last year. They started off with seven new positions. They've invested $10 million into our community. They now have 18 new jobs that they have provided, two different tracks. One is more of a farmhands track, providing a skill that can be marketed from here forward. They're looking at expanding. They would like to build 16 facilities across the United States. They would love to do one of them right here, a 12-acre facility. No one from city council, no one from the mayor's office or from the city has gone out and spoken with them. They find that disturbing, and I just think it's interesting that we're so interested in the new cannabis business that's coming into town, yet we have a business that wants to expand and has made their intentions known, and no one has visited.
Thank you, Mr. Otterstetter. Mr. Lattimore's going to go first, and then Mr. Cuddy, because I'm doing it by the way I see your hands raised. So, Mr. Lattimore, you have one minute on this as well.
Just to follow up with Rob's comment, I mean, you know, hopefully, council will get out and move around a little bit. I'm wearing a pin that has the Twin Towers on it. And I was so proud to see that on the top of Freedom One Tower is, is the antenna from Blair Longo, which is out on North Street. And it's just touching to see it. And, you know, talking to the Longos, you know, I don't know whether any council members have been out there other than when they did the expansion. You wanted to charge them another $100,000 for, for plans or architectural things that they had to do to their expansion. So, I would think, being on the Industrial Development Authority, you would go see the fish farm or go see, you know, existing business, because 60% of your new business is going to come from your existing business, such as courier, what have you. Thank you.
Mr. Cuddy, you'll have one minute on this.
Obviously, anyone interested in expanding can go through CETA, as you know. So, we are expanding businesses that were not here before. So, as I mentioned, Tessie Prison City North. We have, there's the courier expansion. So, my, there is a place to go to. CETA, which I believe in, is the place where businesses go to expand. Unfortunately, my counterpart on the legislature, Mr. Lattimore, wanted to cut the budget of CETA by $150,000. How do you expand business when you're cutting the organization that has brought in millions and millions of dollars and hundreds of jobs? So, I don't think it's fair to say that I'm not doing enough to bring business in. I think you're damaging the prospect of business by your behavior on the legislature.
So, I'm not going to take it as, the questions are rhetorical, but there was a question about Mr. Lattimore's support of CETA. So, I will give him one minute, and you will have one minute to follow-up if you wish. Mr. Lattimore.
I think my, my record for economic development is pretty well established. I mean, when I was on council, as I mentioned at the last debate, you know, the moderator and myself and a couple other Auburnians went down to Texas and made sure that Snyder General was here, which is now owned by Tessie Plastics. I think, you know, the Lattimore name has always been associated with industry, whether it's bottle plants, steel mills, bun factories. You know, Mr. Cuddy, I think you're way off track with economic development. I do question the fact that we've given them X amount of money, and I have not seen one site ready to go. And here's a plan from Ontario County, right? The new pandemic, it's a game plan, you know? Ontario's ready. I haven't seen anything from CETA showing us where we're going to go with the plan. I haven't seen anything from CETA showing us where we're going to go with the plan.
I'm going to give Ginny Kent one minute. And then, Mr. Cuddy, if you wanted to follow up, you have one minute. And then we're going to move on to the next half of this.
Okay, thank you.
You have one minute.
Thank you, Mr. Casantino. So I worked with CETA and the Chamber of Commerce for 13 years. And it would be highly unusual for a business to have the interest in that and not, there are so many places they can go. CETA is a one-stop shop. It's got a huge website. It's very available. They also partner with SCORE, Small Business Administration, the county, the city. And there's always a give and take and a back and forth. So I do hope that, if you did talk to this person, you told them to go to CETA to talk to somebody there. So that's well-known in the community, that that's where businesses go for assistance, and if they're doing really well, to grow. So it's just more practical that way, because we have several businesses in the area as well.
So, Mr. Cuddy, and then Mr. Otterstatter, and then we are going to finish, because I need to identify what we're doing here. Mr. Cuddy, you have one minute.
So legislator Lattimore brought up Snyder General. Well, Snyder General is no longer manufacturing there. Now there's Dyke and McQuaid. But Tessie Plastics, a whole other industry, showed interest in that property. And I was on Ada, and I was very happy to support them in their growth. Also, legislator Lattimore likes to talk about the big blue box, well, and how he wants to fill it. Well, if he didn't empty the big blue box while he was mayor, then how can we trust him to fill the big blue box?
Mr. Otterstatter, you're going to have, did you ask for time?
I did.
Okay, and then Mr. Lattimore, because, Mr. Cuddy, if you're going to talk about Mr. Lattimore's record, he has.
I will be glad to hear what he has to say.
So, Mr. Otterstatter, then Mr. Lattimore, and then we will identify what we're doing here.
So I'm a huge supporter of CETA. CETA has been fabulous to work with. When my wife and I made the decision to come back here, we worked extensively with CETA to help identify and find funding and look at a lot of the different avenues for the business that my wife and I opened in town. And I'm greatly appreciative to them. When I spoke with the CEO of Local Coho, and he mentioned that no one had, from the city, had come out, he was just simply genuinely, I think, a little hurt that no one from the city had shown interest in what he was doing. It is a state-of-the-art facility. They are looking at expansion. One of the items that he really was concerned about was, they, right now, a huge amount of water, obviously, it would be needed in the fish farm. And the cost of the sewage cost, which is measured by the amount of water that comes in, rather than the amount of water that goes out. They're reclaiming approximately 90% of their water. Only 10% of their water does leave the facility into the sewage with the fish waste.
Mr. Lattimore, you have one minute.
I remember going to Montreal to meet with the Bardier's top people. I had read in the Wall Street Journal that they had reduced their European firms. And I was wondering what their strategy was. I took somebody from Ucor, and I took somebody from Forum Stamping, and we went up and talked to them about what their issues were. The issue was that Hillary Clinton couldn't deliver the contract for New York City suburbs. That was the problem with Bardier closing that firm. And they also had a senator up north that they can consolidate with. So that was what happened, Mr. Cuddy.
All right, just to tell you where we are. We're ruled through more than half of our city council forum for 2021. We are delighted to have all four candidates for city council in the studio. They are running for two seats. One is held by the incumbent Terry Cuddy. But we have currently in the studio Timothy Lattimore, who's on the Republican, Conservative, and Independent lines; Rob Otterstatter, who's on the Republican, Conservative, Independent lines; Terry Cuddy, the incumbent, who is on the Democratic Working Families line and the Auburn Party line; as well as Ginny Kent, who is on the Democratic Working Families Party line and the Auburn Party. And, Mr. Boyer, we have not forgotten about you. Our person who is questioning is Jeremy Boyer. He has gone through one round, with each candidate answering a question first. So if it's for everybody, we're going to start back with Mr. Lattimore, unless it's for an individual. Mr. Boyer, welcome back.
All right, thank you. Yeah, in the interest of moving on, I'll shift the topic and ask you about, we've been talking about a lot of different municipal services. One that the city still provides is trash collection. And the city did shut down or cap the landfill. So now that all the municipal waste goes through transfer stations before going on to landfills out of the county. But a lot of municipalities are increasingly going to privatizing this service, whether it's a contract with a private hauler or even allowing property owners just to go out and shop for the service themselves. So my question, given the trajectory of, with the landfill closing, is that something that you think the city should explore, changing? Is the providing of municipal garbage service?
Mr. Lattimore, you have two minutes on this.
Well, let me just say that the landfill had a lot of airspace, had a lot of life to it. Then councillor Cuddy and the existing board, I think, decided to take in outside construction debris, which filled it up to the capacity that it is now that it was closing. But the cost of energy has gone up, thanks to some of the people on the national level. And the truck trash to Seneca Meadows, or even farther west or east or south, is going to cost us a lot of money. So it's unfortunate that that asset is not still there for municipal waste.
Mr. Otterstatter, this issue of privatizing trash collection.
Certainly. I'd like to first recognize the, my appreciation for the hard-working trash collectors. They are, I'm always impressed, rain, shine, snow, ice, my trash gets picked up, and I definitely appreciate that. I did have an opportunity to go out and talk with all of the trash collectors. Tried to do a ride-along with them, like one of the other city council candidates had done, and was not able to do that. But one of the concerns that I have is that I know that Seneca Meadows is planning on closing in the next five years. One of my customers at Octane Social House is on the board for Seneca Falls. And so I have a little bit of information based on talking with him. So once Seneca Meadows closes, then what? We then trucking our trash over to Ontario County. I do have concerns about what is the cost, especially now that gasoline is going up in price. We do have a new refuse tax. Is the cost of that tax going to be continuing to increase? That's just the concerns that I have at this point.
Thank you. Councillor Cuddy, on this issue of trash collection and privatization.
Yes, so I am against privatization of the refuse collection. I was in office when we voted on to basically take that budget line and have it pay for itself. So we basically pay, we pay much less if we, if it's picked up by the city than by the neighboring towns. In fact, the private businesses have increased their numbers up so that it's almost twice as much as what the city of Auburn is picking up for the same. And I'd like, I agree with Mr. Otterstatter, is that the hard-working refuse collectors, you know, for me, them picking up the garbage when the pandemic had first started was one of the reminders that I, that kind of remind, that, like, the city was still working for its people. So, you know, I'm proud of the refuse collection that we provide. We do it in an affordable manner. And if we privatize it, it's going to be, the people of Auburn are going to have to pay more money. I think that we do it relatively cheaply compared to the private businesses outside the city. When it comes to the issue of the landfill itself, there have been several studies. We could not, the DEC would not allow us to expand the landfill. So there's no airspace that legislator Lattimore is talking about. We had to shut it down. And to deal with the increasing prices, we have bought dryers so that we can send our refuse more cheaply and save money that way.
Thank you, Mr. Cuddy. We'll now hear from Ginny Kent on this issue of trash collection and privatization.
Well, I am against privatization of this municipal service. I consider trash collection to be a core service that our residents have come to expect from the city and feel that we should steer clear of privatizing that service and then be dealing with a company that needs to make a profit, especially in light of increasing costs. That's my decision.
Mr. Boyer.
Okay, let's ask you a two-part question, but I think it can get answered in the two minutes here. It's basically public safety staffing. Two departments that I'm really looking at, we have the new ambulance department, so time will tell on staffing adequacy for that. But for the fire department and the police department, each one, can you evaluate whether you feel that they have the staffing and the resources they need to serve the community?
Mr. Otterstatter, you're going first, oddly enough, on a law enforcement question.
Certainly. So I recently did a ride-along with Auburn Police Department and was incredibly impressed with their efficiency, speaking with the officers that I had interaction with that night. They do wish that they had additional manpower to be able to get out of their cars more often, get into the community, really work with the community in a variety of ways, more of the community policing model that I have spoken about, and really help break down some of the barriers that exist in some of the neighborhoods that we have in Auburn. So I think that increasing the presence of law enforcement locally is paramount, especially when we start looking at some of the, I guess colloquially, sometimes referred to as the zombies that walk around town, that the people that are shooting up by dumpsters and on the steps of churches and so on, having a little bit more interaction with those people. Our fire department, due to COVID constraints, I was not able to do a ride-along with them. I've spoken with them numerous times and spoken with some of their retired staff as well. They seem to feel, the ones that I've spoken with, that they have the manpower that needs to do what needs to get done.
Thank you, Mr. Otterstatter. Councillor Cuddy, on this issue of staffing levels at APD and AFD.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Casantino. So staffing for law enforcement is a nationwide issue. And I believe that my time on council, we have done everything we can to keep the levels up as much as we can. We allowed for lateral transfers at times. We did promotional events throughout the city and overtime, educational events to try to increase recruitment and candidacy. It's a nationwide issue, and Auburn is doing what it can to be an attractive place for law enforcement. They, law enforcement has received a great amount of support from the current city council. I'm very proud of that. One of the things with the fire department that the city has done is that FEMA does have grants for staffing. And that has allowed us to hire firefighters. So that would minimize our overtime costs and basically allow for basic institutional knowledge to be transferred. So that, those FEMA's, those FEMA staffing has allowed us to keep those levels up. So obviously, one of the things that we're going to do is keep recruiting, both for the fire and for the police department. And I am very proud of my record on public safety.
We'll now turn to Ginny Kent, who will have two minutes on this issue of staffing levels at the fire department and police department.
So first of all, I want to just mention how much respect I have for our police force during the pandemic. Police officers continued to serve our public. They did it in a safe way, in a responsible way. They continue to be here for us. This is a difficult time to recruit new people into a very, very noble and honorable profession. So I am hoping that we can increase our staff force. I have just read reports, including from chief, just saying that they are down a few police officers from where they would like to be. So I know it is an issue, and I hope that they can add more to the force. In terms of fire, I believe the fire department is adequate at the moment in terms of staffing, and they too have been out there during the pandemic. And I just want to mention that, because we're still in it, sometimes we forget. And so I'm glad to hear about the FEMA money and that that will help us prevent additional overtime costs, which can be an issue sometimes. So fire, I believe they're okay. Police, I hope they are able to recruit some new officers.
Mr. Lattimore, you'll have two minutes on this.
Yeah, public safety's always been a, you know, one of my, well, it's everybody's number-one issue. But I can remember not too long ago, when I was mayor, Mr. Solomon was our city manager, and we had five policemen sitting in the front row and 15 CSCA workers that were going to get laid off. And I leaned over, told the city manager, you're going to be gone before they're gone. So I'm with the police. I think that we need them desperately today. And the only time I've ever had an argument with the present city manager or the mayor was over the manning with the fire department. I thought that the manning was a little too heavy on the fire department, and the overtime was getting a little too high. And so we had a disagreement on those issues. But I think that, you know, things worked their way out. But, you know, the answer to all those questions is the amount of money coming in. And we have to increase the amount of taxable buildings. Right now, we have all these tax-exempt properties, all the churches, all the senior citizen housing, YMCA, the new center across from City Hall, the new fire department, you know, they went in and took taxable property off the tax rolls. So as you look around downtown and you see parking garages and everything else that aren't taxed, we have to increase our economic development and get a bigger tax base to pull that tax weight. And so I'm pro.
Mr. Otterstatter, you'll have one minute.
Having served in law enforcement, I'm, of course, always very appreciative of the hard work that they do. Mr. Cuddy talked about the institutional knowledge, and he hit the nail on the head with that. Right now, our police department, and talking with Chief Slaton a couple of weeks back, he mentioned that right now, we have less than five years' service for the majority of our staff. I believe he coined 2.8 years for our road staff. So looking at retention, looking at incentives to keep the officers that we have and to rebuild that institutional knowledge is, I think, going to be paramount.
Mr. Cuddy, you'll have one minute.
Yes, and that is one of the things that, you know, there have been a lot of retirements in the Auburn Police Department. And, you know, that was something that we didn't predict, but we wanted to make sure that we were providing all the resources we could to recruit new candidates. And we will continue to do so, because Auburn's worth hiring more police officers to do the work. I also want to say that not only Um, I also want to say that not only is the staffing, um, uh, and, um, and it, not an issue, but we are, we're trying to, um, leverage the, the new, um, building or renovation so that the police department will eventually have a Sallyport, and they will be sharing the house, house of the, uh, ambulance service. So, you know, we're doing what we can to, to, um, make the Auburn Police Department a, a better place to work.
Mr. Boyer, you're up to your, uh, next question.
All right. How are we doing? We got enough for one or two more?
You got at least time for one long question, maybe one short question, so we can have everyone answer a question at least twice first.
Okay. May, I, perhaps, perhaps this could be a short one.
Okay.
Uh, just like, you know, we, we, we do have a city manager form of government. Um, Jeff DiGert's been city manager for several years now. Um, he runs the show day-to-day, um, so I'd like you to evaluate his performance. Um, how's he, what's, how's he, what's he doing well? Anything you would like to see him do differently?
Okay. I think, Mr. Cuddy, you're up first. I will say this is a regular-sized question, but if you want to keep it to a minute, you can do so.
I will keep it close to a minute. So, um, I obviously, um, support the current city manager. He runs the day-to-day operations of Auburn, um, over a $38 million budget. Prior to his current contract, uh, it was much lower than those in the same role in similar cities. I see that, um, he, the current negotiated contract we have with him was negotiated by Counselor LaCastro and Counselor Giantino, and was voted unanimously, uh, by a 5-0 council. So, um, I mentioned last week that Jeff DiGert is a talented leader, um, and he should be, uh, should be compensated, uh, for that. So he is doing an excellent job. We are very lucky to have him. Um, as I mentioned last week, his experience as the fire chief and understanding the chain of command has earned, uh, the respect of the people that work for him and, uh, the counselors, uh, for whom he works with, uh, and the people he serves, uh, the people of Auburn. So I'm very proud to have him as the city manager of Auburn, New York.
Okay. Thank you, counselor. We'll now turn to Ginny Kent on the performance of Jeff DiGert, the city manager.
Well, I've known Mr. DiGert since he went through Leadership Quga several years ago, and, uh, clearly, when he stepped into this role, I was not surprised that he did it well. He was, he's been very successful. Um, the city employs about 330 people. Um, he has to oversee the safety and welfare of about 20, 26, 27,000 people, um, and, you know, obviously a large budget. So we'd be hard-pressed to have someone in the private sector, uh, be able to have that level of responsibility for that amount of money, but I'm very glad that he's made a commitment to stay a few more years. I found his leadership during the pandemic to be excellent. Uh, I, I just felt very confident.
Mr. Lattimore, this issue of Jeff DiGert and his performance as city manager?
As I indicated, you know, Jeff worked for me when I was mayor, and so did, uh, mayor, and, uh, you know, I, I always thought that Jeff was, was good at, uh, public safety issues. Uh, I, uh, a little concerned about our new public safety building, and they're gonna have a ribbon cutting on Thursday. Um, with the ambulance service coming in, um, I, I, I don't know why we gotta take up, uh, you know, two, two buildings to run both operations. I mean, uh, a public safety building, uh, to me means everything's housed under one roof, but, uh, the, um, that's not gonna be. They're gonna be housed in, uh, the old firehouse, which is, uh, a little different. So I think that, uh, maybe, you know, getting together with, with people who are planners and, uh, you know, planning it better, uh, might've, might've cost, uh, a lot less money for the city.
Mr. Osterstotter, you have, uh, two minutes on the performance of Jeff DiGert, the city manager.
Certainly. From my perspective, uh, I've seen the revitalization efforts that had, uh, that had occurred prior to my return to Auburn and early, uh, early on in my return to Auburn. Uh, certainly seems as though, uh, Mr. DiGert, uh, was, certainly had a full head of steam behind him in the revitalization. I think COVID threw a monkey wrench, uh, at, at him and, and a variety of, uh, different city managers probably all over the nation. Um, my, one of my concerns was during COVID, we didn't hear from, uh, Mr. DiGert or our mayor or our city council folks, uh, and so as I was tuning in daily to the governor's, uh, briefings, I had to extrapolate, what does that mean for Auburn? And I wish that, uh, someone from, uh, either Mr. DiGert's office or the city council would have helped break that down a little bit, uh, on what does that mean for those of us locally, uh, mask issues and, you know, the quarantining and especially as a new business owner. Uh, but, um, I would say all in all, uh, COVID aside, I've been very happy.
Mr. Cuddy, you'll have one minute.
Okay. 30 seconds for each. Legislature Lattimore, Mr. DiGert did not work for you. The mayor did not work for you. They work for the people of Auburn. I just want to make that clear. Uh, Mr. Otterstotter, um, when there was the critique that Auburn wasn't doing anything during COVID, COVID, or they didn't hear, it's because the, the state of New York and the, uh, Q County Health Department were the, the ones that were calling the shots. What, what, um, the city of Auburn did was that we were always on standby, ready to help the state and the county work to help the people. It was the firefighters that were the vaccinators. So, you know, when, when we talk about leadership, I want to know about the leadership, the lack of, why is there no county administrator in Q County? So we have somebody that is running the day-to-day business in the city of Auburn, but the county has been without a professional administrator, and so, um, I don't know, Legislature Lattimore.
Thank you, Mr. Cuddy. Mr. Lattimore, you'll have one minute. Uh, you raised your hand before on this issue of, uh, uh, comments, so, Mr. Lattimore, you'll have one minute.
Well, thank you. Um, I, I think that the, the people elected the council and the mayor, and I think that the, the people who work, they work for the council day-to-day, and we're supposed to check, make sure that they're not spending taxpayers' money foolishly or inadvertently, and, uh, I'm, I'm sorry if you, you feel that, that Mr. DiGert works for himself, but he doesn't. Works for the council.
Works for the people. Doesn't work for any individual. Okay. Mr. Osterstotter, Ms. Kent, anything to chime in on? Mr. Boyer, you have, uh, you have less than a minute for each of these questions, so, so that we can give Ms. Kent the last question, so we do this in rotation. So if you have a one-minute question?
Okay, one-minute question. Um, so try to make it general, but, um, you know, with, with, with this election, um, control of the, of the council is, could flip, uh, 4-1 Democrats right now. Um, so I'd like to, you know, make, make your case. Why should, why should the GOP control city council for the two, um, Republican candidates? And why should Democrats continue with control for the two Democratic candidates?
Ms. Kent, you have one minute for this.
The city has been moving in a positive direction for the last several years. Yes, we have an opioid crisis, we have, um, homeless individuals, we have problems in our population like any other city, and the best way to improve all of the, um, cases for the city, uh, conditions for the people who live in the city, is to invest in the city, and that's what I've seen, uh, the current, uh, city council doing, and so I believe, uh, it should stay in the hands of the Democrats, but I also am interested in knowing how you feel about women versus men on council, Mr. Boyer. Thank you.
Mr. Boyer doesn't get to answer, answer any questions here, so we'll, uh, move on to Mr. Lattimore. Would you make a case for why the Republicans should take control?
Well, the city of Auburn makes a lot of money from its sales tax, and, uh, Walmart is just inside the city, and Lowe's is just outside the city, and, uh, the taxes, just the property taxes for the city or the town, uh, is another 175,000 for being in the city versus being outside the city. So I'd like to be able to change that around so that, you know, we have enough competition that, uh, we can, we can get our tax, uh, taxes lowered. I mean, on the county, I've lowered the, the tax rate for the last three years, so hopefully we can, uh, with the Republicans, uh, getting out and, and getting it, additional industry, uh, to pick up the, uh, to help pull the tax weight.
Mr. Osterstotter, would you make the case for why Republicans should take over city council?
Well, I'll, I'll certainly talk on this issue. Uh, this is the first time that I've ever run for public office, and to run for public office, it seemed that you had to pick a side, one, one side or the other. Uh, both sides have, have great thoughts, uh, but as I've been talking with so many, uh, so many citizens in Auburn, and, uh, Mr. Cuddy said he's spoken with 2,000, I've gotta be right about there because I ordered, uh, 3,000 door hangers and, and I've only got to maybe half an inch left, left, but, uh, I think all Auburnians should be represented. Diversity in thought, diversity in gender, diversity in race, diversity in, uh, political, uh, affiliation. I think open minds help us grow as a community, and I think that stacking the deck one side or the other is dangerous.
Thank you, Mr. Cuddy. You have one minute on making the case for the Democrats.
Um, obviously, I support, um, the Democratic, uh, candidates, Democratic Party. I am a Democratic, uh, candidate, um, but I will say that, um, you know, while there was a majority, um, 5-0 majority, uh, for the, much of my time on Auburn City Council, um, I will say a lot has gotten done, um, with a 5-0, uh, majority, a Democratic, but I will also say, um, working with, uh, Counselor LaCastro, um, we have, uh, found common ground. I know that myself, my colleagues can work together with, uh, across the aisle, and one of the big things that we did is we, as a council 5-0, hired a city manager. So, um, you know, obviously I prefer Democratic, uh, majority, but I know I can work with, uh, a Republican candidate as long as they use common sense.
I know three of you would like to chime in with a follow-up, but because of time constraints and we need to keep on schedule, we're gonna go to closing statements. If you'd like to incorporate what you're thinking in that, I would defer you to that, uh, idea, uh, but, uh, now we're gonna go to the closing statements, and they're in the reverse order, uh, of how opening statements occurred, and we're now going to hear from Ginny Kent, who is on the Democratic Working Families Party line and Auburn Party. Ginny Kent, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Casantino. Thank you for hosting this forum. The role of a city is to meet the needs of its residents through services such as fire, police, emergency, ambulance services, public works, drinking water, water treatment, code enforcement, and so much more. Our quality of life depends on how well the city does this, and so does our ability to attract and keep jobs and businesses, provide a positive experience for tourists, and encourage people to come to Auburn and call Auburn their home. Even during the pandemic, Auburn continued providing essential services, and work continued on important projects such as the State Street Bridge, which had a ribbon cutting early in the summer. I have faith in our city, and I look forward to bringing my experience and knowledge to council to keep us on the right track. As your next city counselor, I will make sure Auburn has your best interest in mind. I will make sure those basic core services that our resident, residents have come to expect from the city will continue to be there for you. I will work with my colleagues on council to keep moving Auburn in the right direction. We will make responsible fiscal decisions today to guarantee a better tomorrow for our children and our grandchildren, but I need your support. Please vote for me and for Terry Cuddy on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Ginny Kent. Uh, we'll now hear from incumbent Terry Cuddy, who is on the Democratic Working Families Party and Auburn Party line. Counselor, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Guy, and thank you, Jeremy, for hosting us, and thank you CCC and Arma. I'd also like to thank my fellow candidates for being here to discuss the important issues that affect Auburn today. As you can see, my opponents like to paint a grim picture of Auburn, choose any topic, and they're eager to cite any unfortunate isolated event to characterize a whole city based on that event. It is in bad faith and not fair to the good people who work and live in the city of Auburn. Ginny Kent and I are more interested in promoting what is working about Auburn and help fix the problems that our city actually faces. As I mentioned in my opening statement, Auburn is progressing slowly but surely. The city works for its people, and the people benefit from these works. This wasn't always the case. Before I was elected, the city was in fiscal distress, taking a million, uh, million dollars a year of taxpayer money and lining the pockets of a private energy company. This came to about 3% yearly, a yearly raise under property taxes at the time. The failed energy project, the legendary CoGen facility, the gift that will keep taking until the life of the bond ends in 2038. This disaster was brought to you by Legislature Lattimore when he was mayor and his then-city manager, Mark Paley. In those days, there was no plan to solve problems, only to create and prolong hardships. Once I was sworn in, I went right to work and fixed the mess that was wrought. Now our fiscal house is in order, we're more able to serve the public. Even with these strides, we cannot afford to make the same mistakes of the past because we are still paying for them. If you, the voters, want stability and common sense at city hall, I ask you to vote for Ginny Kent and me on election day, November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cuddy. We'll now hear from Rob Otterstotter, who's on the Republican, Conservative, and Independent lines. Sir, you have two minutes.
Thank you all. Thank you, Guy. Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you to my fellow candidates. We're all caring leaders. Uh, I think that's really what it comes down to. We just disagree with some of the decisions that have led us to the situations that we're in now. Are we looking at the, all the negatives? No. We're looking at the positives and the negatives, and I've spoken on both. Uh, I come to this election with experience that includes writing and managing federal state grants, reducing crime, revitalizing cities, re-imaging cities, working with diverse leaders, all things that are incredibly important. I have a vision for Auburn. Auburn has a lot of unrealized potential and incredibly rich history. I think it's important that as we move forward, we need to remember our past. I am personally invested in our city. I have moved my young family here, I've opened a business, uh, I've mortgaged my house to make that business a reality. I've brought back my expertise that I've learned from my time away to try and make Auburn a better place for every one of us in this room. I strongly feel that we need to make, stop making decisions that drive our seniors and young people away. The city limits don't end at downtown limits. People and businesses outside of downtown are suffering around the city. We need to start emulating successful cities approximately the same size as us. We need to stop raising our housing assess, assessments, especially during a pandemic. We need to stop raising taxes. We need to make Auburn safe. We need to bring Auburn back more vibrant and relevant. Stop talking and start doing. Give people more reasons to call Auburn home, and I humbly ask for your vote on November 2nd.
Thank you, sir. We'll now hear, finally, from, uh, Legislature Tim Lattimore, who's on the Republican, Conservative, and Independent Lines. Mr. Lattimore?
Yes, I wore a purple tie today because I didn't want to be a Republican or a Democrat. I just wanted to be, you know, I love the city of Auburn, and, uh, I'm gonna work hard for the city of Auburn. My opponent just mentioned something about energy. Uh, the cost of energy is way up. Uh, in the county, we have a 200 million, 200, uh, megawatt system going in in Kaido or Conquest, up in that area. That, that energy is needed. Our, you know, uh, if we're gonna switch over to some kind of, uh, different alternate, uh, energy source, we need those things. We're gonna build on those things. The steel mill use is about 40, and I think that the whole city is about maybe 50, so 200 megawatts is, is a powerful project. I just want to say that I love this town, and I'll do everything in my powers to, you know, to bring it back. You know, I'll fly to Texas, uh, and bring back Snyder General, which turned into Baker McQuay, which turned into the Tessie Classics. And, you know, we'll build milk plants, we'll build steel plants, we'll, we'll build, uh, You know, we'll build milk plants, we'll build steel plants, we'll build bund factories. You know, we need those things. We need that tax base. You know, as I just mentioned, you know, two box stores next to each other, one has to pay $175,000 more than the other one because the tax rate in Auburn is too high. It's uncompetitive. You know, if you're uncompetitive, you can't get in the box. So I just want to say that I'll do anything possible to help the city. And when I left the city, there was $8 million in health savings that I worked with the union, with Mr. Gabeck, and we got CanadaRx to come in. We have a consortium with the county that we saved the city money when they had to come in. So my expertise in the insurance business is very well-needed in the upcoming years.
Thank you, Mr. Lattimore. Thank you, all four of you, for putting yourselves out there. Not always an easy task. There are seven days to go, as if your households are not counting. But Election Day is seven days from now, and we want to thank you for doing this, your part in the goal of continuing public service in our community. We also want to thank Mr. Boyer. And if I could take a note just for a second, Mr. Boyer's done seven of these. Again, always made them interesting and coming up with interesting questions for the candidates to answer. I think if we had anything today, we had, if I could use his one-word question, it would be spirited discussion today. So we hope that you, as viewers, have learned something about the candidates over this last hour and a half. We urge you to go out and vote on November 2nd. But remember, early voting started on Saturday, the 23rd, and you can go to the polling place now. You can vote for your city councillors. You also have budget items on the, excuse me, ballot initiatives, as well as some county races as well, depending on where you live in the city of Auburn. Because of the number of forums we have this year, Citizen has these on their site at Auburn Pub, soon after they are taped here in the studio, as well as QD Media does put them online for YouTube, and you can watch them there. Auburn Regional Media Access has been mentioned. ARMA will run these forums this Sunday and Saturday at 5:00 PM. That is on channels 12 and 98 for Spectrum and FiOS 31. You can also listen to this forum on WIN 89.1, the college's radio station at 10:00 AM. I'm going to take a break for a couple of days as we shift to going back to our normal programming. We'll have two Inside Government shows on Election Day, the first with Auburn Superintendent Jeffrey Parazola, and then a second Jeff right after that. Auburn City Manager Jeff Deigert, both giving us updates for the school district and the city. On November 4th, QD County Health Director Kevin Cuddy will be giving us an update on the county's response to COVID and an update on vaccinations. Mayor Michael D. Quill will be here on November 9th to give a city update, and we hope to bring you Helene McNabb Coleman, the county legislative chair, as well as Assemblyman Ramadas to give us an Albany update. For now, I'm Guy Cosentino for QD Community College, and I thank you for watching. Have a good night, have a great tomorrow, and be safe, and don't forget, go vote.